Do you get all the information?
How are you?
Is that a black radio?
Plus, if you're here for the public hearing, as I said, there's a science if you're here for DNA two oh two four, I think it's oh one, there's a science two four, you just want to make a comment. And there's a desk if anybody needs to see what we're doing.
So I got all the answers. I got the others. Get that. Get that. I'll do this too.
I'm telling you.
Crazy. Spring sprung, right? Today was not kind of day for me to.
No, thank you. That one's gonna be there. No? And then we have the ETA. Where's that one? Right there. And then our budget house right here.
Budget, I got six.
You may be on the right.
Six o'clock.
I probably don't have to hit the gavel because everybody gets real quiet at six o'clock. I'm glad that we're here. I'll call this meeting to order tonight. Our invocation is done by Commissioner Way. Pleasure be with us by Mayor Pro Tim Kaczynski.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to ask for your many blessings. Be with us, help us, and guide us as we serve our community and our neighbors. Be with us with these decisions that need to be made. Also, Lord, please be with those in the community that need your uplifting prayer in hands. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I give Mr. Way and Mr. Kaczynski. All right, Madam Clark, roll call.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Yeah.
Commissioner Albright.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Kaczynski.
Present.
Commissioner Gleason.
Present.
Commissioner Way.
Present.
Mayor Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, item four, approval of agenda, any additions or subtractions? Not seeing or hearing any motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Excuse me. Motion made by Mr. Wilkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. Now, item five, consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim makes the motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. All right, item six, recognition of Officer DeSantis, chief.
Mayor Wheeler, members of the board, thank you for allowing me time to get special recognition of one of our officers. Being able to recognize one of our own for a job well done is by far the most gratifying part of my job as chief. As you know, we have built a strong relationship with our community partners and with outside agencies through mutual aid agreements. We often call on other agencies' help to assist us with various tasks and events we have here in Crete Moore, such as the music festival. Our partners also ask for assistance from our officers at various events in their jurisdiction. One of my most valued partners is Chief Tony Pograno at the North Carolina Department Agriculture and Consumer Services Police Department of the State Fairgrounds. Officer DeSantis. Officer DeSantis, she oversees our follow-up program where she maintains and checks on our seniors. When we leave the senior, I have witnessed firsthand what this does to her and what she goes through. So thank you for taking on that program. It's all you do to help our citizens. I received this letter wishing to recognize Officer DeSantis from Chief Pograno with the State Fairgrounds. Dear Chief Wheeler, I'm ready to express my sincere gratitude and admiration for Officer DeSantis' act of bravery and selflessness. Her quick thinking and decisive action saved a life, an act that exemplifies the highest ideals of heroism and compassion. On May eleventh, twenty twenty four, at sixteen ten hours, Crete Moore Police Officers DeSantis and Cap received a call regarding injuries from a fall. Upon arrival, they observed a male subject lying face down and unresponsive. Officer DeSantis and Cap rolled the subject over and through their training experience observed agonal breathing. Officer DeSantis quickly called over the radio for an automatic external disintubator, or AED, to be brought to the scene and immediately began CPR on the patient. Once the AED arrived, an off-duty nurse in the area assisted with this deployment while Officer DeSantis continued CPR. Prior to the arrival of emergency medical personnel, the pulses regained and the subject was transported to hospitals. As of May twenty third, twenty twenty four, Mr. Breth filled his home resting and healing from this incident. The courageous presence of mind by Officer DeSantis is truly inspiring and serves as a shining example to us all in law enforcement. Her willingness to step forward and make a difference in someone's life epitomizes the values of all her C services workers. On behalf of the North Carolina Department Agriculture and Consumer Services Police Department and our entire community, I would like to extend our deepest appreciation for her exceptional bravery and unwavering commitment to the well-being of others. Her actions have made a profound difference and will be remembered always. With very late chief.
This is the certificate of recognition. This certificate is proudly presented by the city of Crete Moore to Officer DeSantis with sincere appreciation for her act of bravery, selfishness, and decisive action to save life on May eleventh, twenty twenty four, exemplifying the highest ideals of heroism and compassion, and she is an inspiration to all, including all of us.
All right, sit down for one more surprise presentation. I honestly have no idea. I'm just gonna go with you later on. Detective Smith. The North Carolina Criminal Justice Education and Training Standards Commission offers a professional certificate program to recognize the level of competency of officers serving governmental agencies within the state, to foster increased interest in college education and professional training programs, and to attract highly qualified people into law enforcement and criminal justice careers. Eligibility for professional certificates is determined by formula that combines formal education, professional training, and work experience as a law enforcement or criminal justice officer. Detective Moore has an associate degree in applied science criminal justice technology from Vassar River Community College, completed one hundred and eight semester hours, a total of more than two hundred and twelve training hours excluding BLT and in-service training, and has more than four years of full-time law enforcement experience. I have been asked at least once a week for the last month and a half, two months, if we were going to get this certificate. So I got it yesterday, and thank you to the manager and the mayor for letting me do this also. Congratulations.
Thank you.
For your intermediate.
Oh, that's always a nice way to start a meeting.
Absolutely.
Hi y'all, thanks for being here.
How long away?
There goes half the audience.
Yep, there they go.
All right, we'll move now to item eight, public comment. Mr. Richard? Please, sir, if you will say your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
I'm walking a little slow, but I had, not four years ago, I had T I D, so I'm still recovering a little bit.
But you're here.
But anyway, let's get to the point. I'm here in regards to what I think is a code violation that has not been addressed. If I can approach, I appreciate it. These are pictures that were taken in my backyard, not in my backyard, but my neighbor's backyard, or on his property. And it wasn't the junk, it's not garbage that I know of. That's one thing I have to say. Just to be affectionate, my name's Richard Janson. I live on seven one one STEM Road. I know you folks might have known the lady that used to live there and had bought up a house from unseen, from miles to miles to where we're down in town. And enjoying it. It reminds me of putting new windows. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. I'm not entirely new to North Carolina. I was raised, born and raised in Florida, was joined the Navy, but then I moved to North Carolina looking for work, found it in Charlotte, worked for Western House for ten years, and then moved to Wilmington and worked there for twelve, fifteen years. I know North Carolina a little bit. Before I get too much into the junkyard, I wanted to make a comment about STEM Road. If anybody's been out there, maybe the police haven't, had heard some comments, if you ever get a chance, I'd like to get a little more police work out there. They're welcome to use my driveway because I am right on the county line, and if you think you can come around that bend, you're hauling boogie. I know you've done some work out there, but I'd like to get a little bit more. You're a newcomer, yes, you see these things.
Richard, you have about one minute.
I'll get to the violence. You can see that from the pictures shown, that is junk. I mean, there's at least three old lawn mowers. That's not even up-to-date pictures because I have pictures of my phone. And now I have at least fifteen blue fifty-five gallon drums there now, plus at least fifteen old tires hidden behind them. So my concern is public health for skis this summer. I don't know, I don't know a lot about, I know you've got a ski treatment deal here, but I don't know how it's, where I can fly planes across the house.
Your time is up, sir.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry.
Mr. Fringus, you can stand there if you want to. Since that's in the ETJ, what do, what, if any jurisdiction, do we have over that? None, that's come from the county.
Right, that's how, of course, or it's not something that our code ordinances allows us to cover because it is not within the same lines. It is ETJ.
Right.
I take exception to that. Your ETJ is one mile, you know, when you say limits, it's one mile. So this stuff is not even a hundred yards from my house. So you folks do have the okay, go in there and do something about it. So I take exception. Send it to the code.
However, according to North Carolina law, the city's code ordinances, so the regulations that pertain to junk yards and public nuisances of this type, the city does not have the legal authority to enforce those ordinances outside of its corporate limits. The county, on the other hand, very well might be able to pinpoint there nuisance regulations.
Into the county, and that's not correct. They will, they don't, they're not going to touch it, and they refer me to our, Mr. Creed Moore's inspector.
Well, I've been telling you, in the pattern of North Carolina law, the city's code of nuisance ordinance authority does not extend outside.
Nine five point oh one, tell you what it's about. Also, nine six point oh seven and oh eight, give you a little clarification on that.
What are these are corporate? Those are the city's code ordinance.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. The code ordinances do not apply outside of the city's corporate limits.
Well, that's what I just said, the ETJ is one mile past orbit limit.
Right, the ETJ is not the city's corporate limits, that's a separate plan and development.
I agree, but according to ordinance, you have jurisdiction over it.
No, the city can enforce its development ordinances within the ETJ as well as the city's corporate limits, but the city's police power ordinances, like nuisance abatement and those sorts of things, can only be enforced inside the city's corporate limits.
That'd be up to, I think, the city commission to decide that. May you notice?
No, sir. It's up to North Carolina legislators to change that. We have to follow the law that is presented to us.
What about your ordinance, however?
Our ordinance, again, goes to the corporate city limits, of which you are right there inside the corporate city limits.
That's correct.
The gentleman that is doing it is just outside the corporate city limits. It's inside the ETJ, but it's outside the corporate city limits, so therefore we have no jurisdiction over it.
I take the difference, but I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. Mr. Wilkins.
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, I understand it's not our jurisdiction, but can we reach out to the county on his behalf, see if someone could take care of us, he hasn't looked at that the rest of his life?
Did you reach out?
Yeah, sure.
What?
Ask him where Shelby's been to, so I know.
Okay, hang on just a minute. Commissioner Kaczynski.
I've already reached out to Commissioner Bresmay and Tim Karen. They've gone and looked at this property. There's a question of jurisdiction in the county's planning. The way they're looking at it, they're looking at it differently, but I have reached out to them already and asked them to look into this for, because Mr. Peterson came to Town Hall and we spoke in the hallway out there. And I, and you did too. And I reached out to them almost a month ago, and their, their planning department is a little concerned about where the location is, so that's where it is right now, but we have reached out to them.
Well, again, can we just reach out again to determine?
I will take care of that.
Thank you.
I'll reach out to the county manager tomorrow and see if we can go from there. Do I have your phone number on this sheet?
I didn't put it on there, Mr.
All right, let me, let me get that for you from you real quick.
Nine four one six two eight five one three nine, that's my cell phone.
All right.
Since I'm retired, I'm seventy-nine, I'm usually right by my phone.
Nine four one six two eight five four three nine.
I'll be eighty in August, so.
Well, congratulations.
Long run of life, by the way.
One way or another, I will be back in touch. It may not be tomorrow, but as soon as I know something, you will.
I have a letter from your inspector, so that'll help you. He referred me to Grandville County Department, which I went to in Oxford, talked to him, gave him a couple of names, and I talked to a couple, and I can tell you who I talked to, so if you can, I can give that to you.
No, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna start at the top, work my way down.
As a last thing I'll say, like I said, I'm not unfamiliar with working, and I graduated from UNC, Charlotte.
There you go.
You too?
Chapel Hill.
That's, I'm at a baseball game today.
Yeah, and it's just differentials. Thank you, sir.
That's, that's not it.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate whatever help that you can get.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, that was public comment. All right, we move on to nine A, presentation of proposed FY twenty-five operating budget. The city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I had to sign up, she means only.
Yeah, did you sign the wrong one, maybe, maybe she'll?
Well, we're not there yet.
Did you all want to talk about the budget, or particular, yeah, the budget, we're not at the budget.
We, we do a public, separate public hearing for the budget.
Yeah.
This was just general public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem and Commissioners, good evening. Following three very productive budget work sessions in March, April, and May, I respectfully submit to you this evening for approval the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2025 and the fee and rate schedule for 2025 in accordance with the provisions of the City Charter and the Physical Control Act of North Carolina. But first, a quick review. General fund revenues are estimated to be six million fifty-nine thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars. The head velourum tax base on the, is based on the new assessment property values, which are six hundred and sixty-one million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. The current tax rate this year is sixty-one and a half percent, sixty-one point five percent. The revenue neutral rate is, will be thirty-six point eight percent. And the staff recommendation that the board sets a new tax rate for FY twenty-five at forty-two cents for one hundred dollars of valuation. General fund expenditures. Department's request came in at six million five hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars. The manager's proposed budget for this year is six million seven hundred twenty thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. A few, but not all expenditure highlights are a three percent, three point six percent COLA as reflected in the North Carolina League of Municipalities COLA survey of two hundred and thirty-five units of local government, one hundred and eighty-nine municipalities, thirty-nine counties, and several other local entities. Two replacement vehicles for public works and one for community development department. Two new full-time equivalents, one planner, and a narcotics gang investigator for the police department. Engineering and construction on two public parking lots, which are main, on Main Street and down on Elm Street. Police department portable and mobile vehicle radio replacements. A recreation master plan, and eight additional license plate readers for entrance of our city limits. Fund balance appropriated. General fund balance expenditures total six million seven hundred twenty thousand seven hundred forty dollars. Fund revenues, six million and fifty-nine thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars, leaving a fund balance appropriation of six hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. Outbuild funds, estimated revenues of one hundred and eighty-six thousand. Requested expenditures are three hundred and fifty-one thousand. The balance will come from fund balance in an amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand. Two of those capital projects are sidewalk gap right-of-way acquisitions and the sidewalk engineering and design. Stormwater fund, estimated revenues of five hundred and one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Expenditures are estimated at five hundred and one nine fifty-four. At cost, that breakdown, those costs are administration and planning for three, thirty-five, eight forty-two. Repairs and improvements, a hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and twelve, and the twenty thousand dollar, twenty thousand seven hundred dollar mounted service payments to the Cameron County Tax Office process in our taxes. Stormwater fees and rates have been adjusted based on the recommendation that you received back in, I believe, April from Raptillis. In addition to the proposed budget, the board discussed minor changes to the fee and rate schedule at their April fifteenth meeting, work session. These adjustments were in community development for re-inspection fees, site plan reviews, major subdivision reviews, miscellaneous services, zoning compliance permits, zoning studies, verifications, and certificates of non-conformity, zoning text and map amendments, penalties and penalties. The other adjustment in rates, fees and rates is in the parking section, or increased rentals of the Willow Up Room. There's a fifty dollar increase for a half-day rental, which came out to a hundred dollar increase for a full rental, and a fifty dollar increase on the application fees. I would again like to express, publicly express my appreciation to the Finance Director, Mr. Lee Faines. All department heads and other city staff for their support and assistance in developing a fiscally responsible budget. This recommended budget reinforces our commitment to fiscal and environmental stewardship, operational efficiencies, strategic investments, and changes in management. Going forward, we look ahead to another successful and productive year that brings us all closer to achieving the goals identified by the board and enhancing the level of services we provide to the citizens of Cretemore. Mr. Mayor submitted your question to conclude my comments.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Way, any questions?
No, sir, I have none.
Mr. Peterson?
No, sir.
Mr. Wilkins?
No, sir.
Mr. Lawright?
No, sir.
Mayor Protem?
No question.
All right. City Manager, thank you for a job well done.
Yes, sir.
All right, we move to nine D, which is the FY twenty-five operating budget public hearing, at which time I will open that up. And first off, on the budget, Ms. Samantha Harris. Harris, if you'll state your name and your address for us, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Samantha Harris, I live at two one one Research Report in Cretemore. Mayor for members and community. I see the agenda that perhaps tonight will be the final review and pass of the budget, but please hear my heart before doing so. It is with great sadness that I stand before you tonight to address my stance on increased tax rates, tax rates and growth in Cretemore. I would like to begin with saying that I've spent my entire life in Southern Granville County, Butler and Cretemore specifically. I chose, when I bought my, my home, as my last home, I chose Cretemore. Although we are on the cusp of Franklin and Wake Counties, and Durham only a stone's door away, I chose Cretemore. I personally love living in small-town America, being able to walk outside and hear birds chirping and children playing instead of gunshots and horns blaring. Small-town America makes me sigh with relief when I'm coming home, knowing that I can enjoy my latter years at a tranquil, slower pace, without frustration, worry, and chaos. With that being said, it is unclear to me why I do so, why we are so intent on having this big city idea. At this point, it appears that we are in a position of taxation without representation. Yes, we do have city councils, but are you really representing us, the community as a whole? Are your decisions based on what you want or what the people want? Are you concerned about how this growth in tax increase will affect our parents, our grandparents, and those who are not included at that median pay that the census report stated? The average salary is somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars. Growth in taxes that caused some, that now face having to pay county and city taxes when the city line was pushed back to Mount Energy. Growth in taxes that will allow four new housing developments that we don't have a water system to support. A water system, by the way, that we can't drink, and the rates that are increasing at an alarming rate. Growth in taxes that will increase our traffic significantly and congestion that will wreak havoc. Growth in taxes, in my opinion, and from what I understand, if we use six hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the seven million that we now sit on, would balance the budget without such a high tax rate. Have you considered any of these questions? Are you asking us, the current residents of Cretemore, to carry the weight of the growth on the backs of our taxes? Growth in taxes that I feel have not thoroughly been thought out. The growth in taxes that is happening now is not necessarily the only way that money can be generated. Why not increase revenue by bringing more jobs into the area? Why not bring restaurants and businesses that we don't have to travel to Raleigh, or Durham, or Franklinson to utilize, such as Chick-fil-A, or Loews, or Target, or Walmart, or Chipotle? Increased work means increased revenue. Yes, we want to grow, but at a rate that is feasible for the ones that already live here. We want to grow, but not at the risk of losing the identity of Cretemore. Remember what made you decide to live here in the first place. Remember your neighbors, remember your relatives, remember your friends when you decide to make a decision. There has to be a balance of growth and taxes, a balance that won't cause the aging population to work themselves to a frappe, to ensure that all we have invested in will not be faced with foreclosure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next on the list is Pamela Criswell. Ms. Criswell, same thing, name and address, please.
Pamela Toller Criswell, two two zero eight High Court, Cretemore. Who knows if I can really add much more to what Ms. Harris has stated. But good evening, and thank you for an opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here to voice my concern about the tax increase and share why I oppose this proposal. I've been a resident of Cretemore for thirteen years, and I can only recall the renovation of the community center and the Dollar General as addition to the city since I've been here. I know that we have installed sidewalks and create, and I'm glad that's created, because I do really enjoy taking that walk down Highway fifty-six. Unfortunately, I still have to commute to other counties to shop, for entertainment, or fine dining, and in some cases, for recreation. I've seen the proposed budget and have so many questions. I realize that this isn't the form for answers, but that doesn't negate the importance of my questions. Some of my questions are, after reading the budget, proposed budget, is how do we use twenty thousand dollars to replace a Christmas tree? Are the parking lots that are being paid inclusive of private business lots? If so, why would we be paying those? Is there really a need for a narcotics or gang investigator? Are there activities in our communities that we don't know about, that we should know about? Or is this just a way to be proactive in making sure that those activities don't happen in our areas? Does the one hundred and forty thousand dollars cost for mobile vehicle radios for all? Is the one hundred and forty thousand cost for mobile vehicle radios for all of the police vehicles? And are they really needed? The lack of team development in the city, the few questions I stated, the increase in county taxes that was just voted on, and the fact that many of us are still trying to recover from a pandemic, are concerns that directly form my opposition to a tax increase for the city of Cretemore residents, which does include you all. I respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners vote against a tax increase at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Since I will give the panel an opportunity if I will speak for or against the budget, even if you didn't sign up, I'll give you the opportunity at this time. Not seeing any?
Yeah.
Oh. Three minutes and name and address, please.
Delma Thomas Mungo, sixteen eleven Irving Place, Cretemore, North Carolina two seven five two two. So, raising taxes in Cretemore is a big controversial decision, particularly given the concerns about the lack of visible improvements amenities compared to the neighboring cities. Here are some points that might be addressed. Transparency and communication. Lack of visible improvement, the city administration should clearly outline some of the current, certain, excuse me, current projects. Transparency and budgeting and spending can help residents understand the challenges faced by the city. Current challenges, waters and facilities. Addressing the fresh, depressing issues of water and infrastructure should be a priority. These are essential services that directly impact the quality of life and property value. Main Street development, as Ms. Criswell just stated, some of the proposed projects would be paving parking lots on the city's streets, which that means we saw that there's a drugstore that possibly is being paved. Is that city property now, or is that going to be private property? Are we spending the money properly for the citizens? Soliciting industry and business. Active efforts to attract new businesses and industries can diversify the local economy and create jobs. This could improve taxes incentives for businesses, improving infrastructure and marketing in the city as a business-friendly environment. Recreation, investing in recreational facilities, shopping centers, and other amenities can make Cretemore more attractive for residents and potential new residents. Community engagement, public forums and feedback, surveys and polls, conducting surveys to gauge the residents' priorities and guide decision-making. You know, we feel that sometimes that there is not enough for open communication when it comes down to, for even taxes and things of that nature. There's not a lot of people here, clearly, I'm not sure a lot of people really understand how important it is to actually come to these meetings and know what's actually being said and being talked about in these meetings. Inflation and economy pressure. Acknowledging the impact of inflation and economy pressures on residents. We clearly are asking residents, whether it be those of us who earn fixed incomes, those of us who are not, that we need to pay these additional taxes to do whatever it is that we're going to do, what we deem important in the city. With that being said, inflation is already at a sky high, and we are still sitting here and saying that we need to possibly add two to five to maybe six hundred dollars to people's mortgages and things of that nature. It is not where we need to be. One of the things that Ms. Criswell actually said was that, I actually think Ms. Harris spoke about this, we talk about the salary. On our website, it states that our median salary is somewhere between seventy-five and seventy-eight thousand dollars. With that being said, there was a meeting that I sat here, and one of our commissioners actually actively said that they don't make that kind of money. That in itself is going to impact that particular commissioner's family and their home. So why would we also change something that's going to affect one of our commissioners, our elected officials, where it comes down to, we can actually use the six hundred-plus thousand dollars and take it out of our reserve fund?
You have one minute.
All right. I just think that addressing these points, and by coming into the city and talking to the residents, having the surveys and doing the forums, we need to really actively bring in the community when we're making these decisions. This impacts all of us, not just a few of us, not some of us. I, if my mortgage was raised, I would be fine, but a lot of us will not. Even those folks who live in my community, they will not be okay. The community down the street from me will not be okay. I think we need to adjust the number that we're talking about raising taxes and going forward from there. Again, listen to the community as you're making these decisions. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Sit there. All right. Close the public hearing, that's where I'm at. I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will move along to nine C, which is the adoption of FY twenty-five budget ordinance. I'm going to turn that over to the city manager to see if he has anything to add, that he wants to add to it.
I don't have anything to add, other than what's in the summary here, I'd be glad to read it if you'd like me to.
Please read the summary, and then I will call the commissioner.
Following the February, following the February tenth, twenty twenty-four, city annual strategic planning workshop, the city manager and staff prepared their respective department budgets, requests, and preparation of the twenty-five annual operating budget. On March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, this board held three budget work sessions to receive public comment and discuss the matters the managers proposed. Budget following each work session adjustments were made by the city managers directed by the board. City manager's recommendation for the FY twenty-five budget request presentation this evening reduces the annual velourum tax rate from sixty-one and a half cent, a hundred dollars of valuation of taxable property, to forty-two cent for a hundred dollars of valuation. The FY twenty-five operational budget and fee and schedule rate must be approved according to North Carolina general statute by June thirty, twenty twenty-four. to North Carolina general statute by June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Smith? All right. Thank you, sir. I will start this time with Mr. Wilkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After a much spirited debate at our last meeting, we talked about sixty-one cents leaving the tax rate the way it was or fifty-one cents, I'm glad to see that this board has settled on the tax rate of forty-two cents, which is almost a twenty cent reduction in our tax rate. For that reason, I'm in favor of the budget.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albright?
No. I don't have anything else to say. I just, no.
Mayor Pro Ten?
So, in the public hearing, two of our citizens asked us to take six hundred and sixty thousand dollars out of the budget so we wouldn't have to raise the taxes. That's not the case. I'm trying to straighten that out. To keep the tax rate at forty-two cents, we are taking six hundred and sixty thousand dollars out of the budget. If we raise the tax rate higher than that, we wouldn't have to take the six hundred and sixty thousand out. So please know that there is six hundred and sixty thousand in the general fund we are using to keep that tax rate from going up any higher. I know that there's questions about stuff that's in the budget. Our meetings are streamed. But the Creedmore newspaper has done a very good job of covering our meetings, all these issues, including the radios for the police department, and the fact that we're getting them because the ones we have are not capable, are not compatible with today's technology. They will not work anymore if we don't replace them. The ones we have now will not work with five G. They won't. So it may seem that it's an expenditure that's not necessary, but truly, our chief of police has explained to us, we've had presentations made to us, that it truly is. And this budget is as tight as it can be to get things done. I will not comment on the parking lot on Main Street. That's all yours. And I just, growth is coming, and it's not that we are encouraging it. There are developers lining up to wait for this water and sewer, this sewer line to come through. They're coming. We can't stop them. They own land. If they meet our requirements, they come in. I'd love to have them all. I'd love to have more restaurants. I'd love to have that, but the city doesn't control that. We can visit these companies and if you all remember when Gerald Smith was in office, we spent forty thousand dollars to a company called Retail Strategies to go out and find companies to move into our community, Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, to use the land over here by Foodline and bring us more stuff. They came back with nothing. That was forty thousand dollars gone. And there is not a time that in, since I've been a commissioner and I've gone on a trip with the mayor to one of these conventions, we haven't tried to find a way to do that for you. And our community development office is trying to find a way to do it for you. And I know that, that previous boards and previous mayors have also tried, but we don't own every ounce, every single inch of land in Creedmore. If it's owned by somebody else, we can't tell them what to do with it, just like we can't tell anybody what to do with their land. The other thing I want to straighten out is at this time, the city line does not extend beyond Mount Energy. That has not been approved yet. That is coming up for discussion tonight and will go for public comment, but we do not own land out beyond Mount Energy. So I just want to clarify that and make sure everybody understands the few little points that I wrote up. I appreciate the public comment. I absolutely do. I just want to make sure that everybody's got the right information.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Wade?
It's a, it's a struggle when you talk about budgets and finances, and I'm sure I've been very vocal. As, as someone that lives in the community and has a family of five that day, support on what they currently make and live in a neighborhood with increasing taxes and fees, county taxes, city taxes. On the other side of that, I've also lived in Durham. I've lived in Chapel Hill. It's nice with the small town community feel that we do have. It's nice to have my kids outside playing. Police officer comes through and gives my six-year-old a badge sticker and just has a conversation with him or gets out of the car and plays with it for a minute. I mean, that's enjoyable. I really enjoy that. Some of the comments made about businesses and things of that nature, I would love to see more stuff come here. Drive currently to Wake Forest just about to go grocery shopping and things of that nature because we're limited to what we have here. It's, it's one of the natures of the beast, I guess you can say. As far as some of the positions to be funded, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if we're at that level of crime. I don't know if it's going to be an offensive situation where we try not to have that come over to us. I am confident voting for what we're going to vote for tonight as far as that tax. I could not, I could not endorse an increase more than what we have. I just think that would be too much of a financial strain, especially on myself, on members of the community that I know are having limited income. And I'm still waiting to see what my reassessment is going to be for my mortgage payment because my taxes are included in my mortgage payment. I'm sure when I get that phone call or that letter from my bank, I'm going to have to make some hard decisions. And I just want to know that I'm there with you. And I think that's all I got for right now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gleason?
Like they, everybody said budgets are, are a tough thing to have to deal with. I can remember when I first bought a home in Creedmore about eighteen years ago. The Creedmore tax rate was the highest and I think still was the highest tax rate in the county for town or city. I think after this budget year will be the lowest. When you have a city that is eighteen years old, as far, as long as I've been here, and I've seen very little growth in our city in those years. And when you have a city that has no growth, that means that everybody that's there now has to pay for everything. The police cars get old, the fire trucks get old, people's salaries go up because of COVID. There are costs that, just like inflation, go up for a city. The city hasn't raised its taxes at all in over eight years. And it's to the point now where, yes, we can use part of our fund balance, which I was all for, originally, originally what wasn't there. That six hundred thousand dollars was added to keep the tax rate down. We need increased space for our police department. We need to make sure that the fire department has what it needs, needs to meet the OSHA requirements, and worse, as taxpayers, we should all be grateful for the fire department. The fire department costs the city six percent. Our police department costs about forty percent. If it wasn't rid of volunteer firemen, we'd have a forty percent increase in our budget just for that. So I'm on a, for the first time in my life, as of January, my family came on a fixed income. Fortunately, like Ms. Thomas, my taxes going up are not going to hurt me or my family individually, and I know that it will hurt some. And I wish that there were ways that the legislature in North Carolina made ways so that people that made certain incomes, people over a certain age groups, could get different types of credit for their tax. But the bottom line is let me make it clear that myself and the other members on this board did everything we can or did everything we could to keep the tax rate at the rate it is at forty-two cents. And all, like I said, I'd like to see it thirty-six, but forty-two is what we need and I think it's fair and for the forty-two percent.
All right. Thank you, sir. I guess my turn now. What concerns me, a couple of things. Getting these businesses in here. My family's run a business in Creedmore for over sixty years. Every time we approach a business, Chick-fil-A, you know, McDonald's, any of these businesses, they come, they look, they say you need more people, more rooftops. Then when we try, we have development come in, we have citizens that complain that we don't want the growth to come here, we want to remain a small town. So it's kind of a double-edged sword on that. You can't get storage and let's get more people, and you don't want more people because it makes the city too big. So it kind of puts you in a vise as to which way to go, and this board has done a good job of trying to handle that. Also, I was in favor of a small tax increase because the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, excuse me, that we take out of the general fund is a one-time-only thing that we are using to keep the tax rate low. Now, if we spend that money, there is not some we can pull back out again from the general fund. So taxes would have to go up to cover that shortfall. I wanted us to be prepared so we didn't have to do things like that, and I'm hoping we don't, but that is a possibility. And to address the parking lot, yes, that, that is designed to go in next to, between the drugstore and the Masons. I own about forty percent of that, they own about sixty percent. City was looking for additional citywide parking. We agreed that we would lease them at no charge that property and then they would pave it and maintain it for city use, not for the drugstore. I'd still have to pay taxes on it, but the city will enable them to have more uptown parking by allowing that to happen. So the only reason I really mention that is I want you to understand that Creedmore Drug and Bobby Wheeler don't get a dime from any of that part of it. I'm basically giving them the property and paying the taxes and then letting them do what they need to do. All right. Is there anything else to come before we vote on this? Okay. I'm going to start, I'm going to just call down the roll here and do it this way. Mr. Wilkins?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wilkins votes yes. Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason votes yes. Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Mr. Wade votes yes. Mr. Albright?
No.
All right. And Commissioner, Mayor Pro Ten?
No.
All right. Motion carries three to two. All right. Again, I want to thank the city manager and finance director and all our department heads for the work they've done and the program that they have planned to do and looking after the best interest of our, of our citizens the best we can, and that's all we can ever hope for, Lord willing. Okay. We move now to, let's see, that's that. New business budget amendment number eight, closing the city's budget for FY twenty-four.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. Tonight, I bring before you hopefully the last budget amendment for FY twenty-four. This is my cleanup budget, I would say, for the year. One thing to note, this amendment is not taking any general fund balance, it's just appropriating funds that we already have in the budget. One of those items being the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we received for city hall renovation that you all approved the correct project ordinance on, this is just simply moving those funds from the general fund to that project and setting that accounting in place. Also in this amendment is five hundred and forty-six dollars of funds received from the insurance company for damages done to two police vehicle windshields. So this is just appropriating those funds for the repair of those windshields. Lastly, this, again, this came to the general fund, is moving the remaining cash that's left in the capital reserve fund for an old project that's been completed. So they're just moving stagnant cash in that fund and moving it back to the general fund so it can generate, get to generate more interest, just adding it back to our fund balance for any possible projects in the future. And that amount being a hundred ninety thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Lastly is just acknowledging and recognizing eight thousand dollars of interest on investment in Stormwater Fund to cover over expenditures that went over in the Stormwater Advisory where the business came over and went over like eight thousand dollars. So without taking it from the fund balance, it's just recognizing that surplus funds we earned in interest on those funds. And that is it for this amendment. Hopefully, like I said, this is the last one. I'm in the process of doing my closeout and cleanup for the year. So if I have another one, hopefully not before you have to work. Hopefully, I got everything for this one.
Any questions for the finance director? Not hearing any? No. I'll entertain a motion to approve budget amendment eight.
I make a motion to approve budget amendment number eight.
Motion is made by the Mayor Pro Ten. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Lee.
All right. Ten B is easement agreement for New Joe P. Road Lift Station. Mr. Frankins?
Good evening, Mr. Frankins, the board. The item before you tonight for your consideration relates to Seguassa's request of the city to grant an easement across property that we own at the end of Helen Street and what was formerly the old lagoon site. I want to call it Ledge Creek Flats because I think that makes it sound better because it sounds like something different. Ledge Creek Flats is a twenty-seven or so acre parcel that used to be the city's wastewater ravine. You can go to the map, Barbara, and that'd be helpful.
Sounds fancy.
So a couple of weeks ago, we received a request from Jim Ren, Seguassa's attorney, for easement, which if we scroll over the top of the map, Helen Street Profile Commons, that one. Okay. So it's a little bit hard to understand, but the red highlight is the easement that's being requested. Over on the right-hand side of the screen is Ledge Creek Flats. The time is to the bottom at about four o'clock, if we were looking at the clock, is where Helen Street comes in to the draw. So as Helen Street comes in, what you'll see in green is an illustration that represents a potential extension of Helen Street, which is now a fifty-foot wide public rideable. And the reason that's shown is because we do have plan, and I put plan in quotes, from the Tijik Creedmore Forward document and from past recreational masterfindings that do show some potentially light recreational uses at Ledge Creek Flats. We all know it's an old lagoon, you couldn't build buildings on it because it's a tacked fill area, but certainly you could do low-intensity light construction, walkways, meadows, like I've said, this golf courses are the things that could happen out there. I've said, on this golf course, there's other things that could happen out there. So what I'm simply trying to promote is the idea that we don't let this easement disrupt the possibility of those future amenities to be built. What I simply want to do is try to leave the door open to Helen Street being extended and the idea that we could maybe put a parking area there that would allow residents and citizens to utilize the future amenity. So the easement as presented, of course, shows the improvement and the facilities also on the map here. So it's kind of hard to break it out, but the bottom half of the screen shows the improvements in the profile view. So on the top half of the screen, we're looking down at them, on the bottom half of the screen, we're looking at the profile. So the two red circles towards the bottom of the screen here illustrate two proposed manholes. And those manholes right now are proposed to be quote, "within the future Helen Street Extended Right-of-Way" and proposed to be two feet above the existing grid. Both of those things could complicate future potential construction of Helen Street or a parking lot, or again, any other use of that amenity. Now, I don't blame Seguassa, or certainly don't blame CDM Smith, because they might not have known about the ideas that we have for the future of Ledge Creek Flats. So that's why this easement agreement is the right place for us to simply insert these ideas and reserve our rights in an appropriate fashion going forward. Again, I simply don't want to hinder our potential. So amongst the ideas of relocating the manholes, potentially clearing the existing manholes, Mark can he scroll anymore now to the picture of the existing manhole that's above ground? It would have been like the next page in the agenda. No, go down, the lagoon manhole, okay, next one. What we're left with is that. That's the existing manhole, that's about a six-foot tall concrete structure that exists above the ground. That's out there right now.
Who's tractor's that?
That was actually Count of Buckner's tractor, they were helping us to clear Ledge Creek Flats, because they have a bush hog that we were able to borrow from them and work on keeping the grass and the land clear and keeping the vegetation down from growing so high. So this manhole is a remnant of the city system, but this manhole would be abandoned. And the idea is that if it's abandoned, what we hope is that it be removed, quote-unquote, at least to grade, and then filled, so that in the future, this won't be another impediment to construction. Now, there are similarly two other manholes also on the property that are being abandoned as part of the I-85 Interceptor Project. So we were hoping a part of the demolition could include at least proper abandonment of those facilities. And then the last thing I will add is that there was consideration potentially for future land use out there that might require restoration facilities. And the only thing I was hoping for was that we could write in to the easement that in case of a future restoration facility, that there would be eligibility for connection. And the idea that we could connect to a point here that would make our future construction maybe easier and less complicated rather than more expensive and more complicated as a result of this easement. So contrary to the recommendation I had initially put in the staff report, which was motion to approve easement agreement, what I'd like to update my recommendation to is tabled so that we can have a more detailed conversation with Seguassa's executive director and their attorney potentially about amendments to the easement. I'll stop there, if there are any questions that anybody has for me.
Mayor Pro Tim?
So, Mr. Frangos and I spoke about this earlier this week when I went through the agenda. And with my fellow Seguassa commissioner, I think that this should be tabled at this time and let us talk to Seguassa's executive director and make sure that we have these issues ironed out before we accept this easement. I totally agree with Mr. Frangos, but I have one little question. Ledge Creek Flats, could it be a dog park?
Yeah, yeah, why not? I mean, there's no buildings, right?
Okay, I just, I didn't see dog park, I missed it.
I didn't say at this time, but it was in the report, yeah.
Okay, so anyway, I would like to make a motion that we table it and until after we can have a meeting with Mr. Schroyer and discuss that.
All right, before we recognize that motion, let's do questions and then I'll come right back to you. Commissioner Wilkins, any questions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Albrecht?
No table anything.
Commissioner Gleason?
No.
Commissioner Way?
How large is that area?
Twenty-seven acres, plus about three or four acres on the parcel that is the Helen Street Extended. So it could be up to about thirty acres total. Lot of it's got floodplains and things on it, but there's some usable land there.
So out of the thirty acres, how much of that is usable?
I'm gonna guess probably around, I mean, when you say usable, you could walk on all of it, right? It's land, we can go out there, but certainly you wouldn't want to build a building on any of it. But you could use probably twenty-plus acres, maybe as a dog park, maybe as a golf course, maybe as just walking trails.
Splash pattern?
I'm not sure I'd want to splash in anything that came up.
Yeah. It'd all be clean water.
It would be clean water, but yes, the short answer to your question is that's a possibility, because that's not heavy construction, right? The thing we've been told is you couldn't put a big building, because the idea that the earth is unstable and it could sink. So splash pattern?
Maybe. I'm just saying.
Another section of Creedmore we're gonna have to go mow, isn't it? All right, yeah, you didn't have anything interesting, but thank you. All right, Mayor Pro Tim, you have a motion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion until such time, and I believe I have spoken to Mr. Schroyer and we have a tentative date for a meeting on the thirteenth. So we could possibly bring this up at our next meeting.
At our work session.
Yeah.
What date is that?
Eighteenth.
Or eleventh, maybe.
June seventeenth.
All right, so the motion is to table this issue till our June seventeenth meeting?
Mm-mm.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, motion carries, it will be tabled. All right, Mr. Frangos, are you still up or was that part of the same thing?
No, I'm still, no, this is the next item.
This is the next one.
Okay.
So the next item on your agenda is lengthy one and I don't want to keep it forever, but I want to go further. These are important items of text amendment. We haven't done these in a while. I've been with the city about eleven and a half years, and since the first time that I began working with the city, I've been doing text amendments to our ordinance. And it really came hot-heavy early on in my tenure, and lately, I feel that we've gotten the ordinance in pretty good shape. We haven't had the need for many amendments. Lately, we've been learning lessons in code enforcement, and we've been trying to be much more clear and succinct in some of these items that we want to cover. A lot of them are related to code enforcement, but this is just the first batch of what we're looking to propose. There will be a ZTA O2 likely coming back to you maybe in the next month or the coming months, which will include additional amendments to things like enforcement procedures, which I know is very near and dear to the hearts of our board. This batch of ordinance amendments does not include those type of enforcement procedures. That's something that Kevin and I are gonna work closely on and try to get you a new version. So this has a bunch of different or random code amendments that I'm just gonna try to run through. If there's any that you have a question on, please stop me. First batch relates all to the code of ordinance. And to be clear, the code of ordinances is the part of our code that applies only to the city limits. These are the codes that are under the police power, as Kevin had mentioned earlier, and they give us a little bit more authority, but again, inside the city limits only. So the first item I'll call your attention to is on, well, I'm not gonna call out the page number, ninety-six oh eight, which is nuisance conditions, number twenty related to nuisance vehicles. A lot of times what happens is a nuisance vehicle will sit on the ground and there'll be grass and weeds and noxious vegetation that grows up underneath or immediately adjacent to the vehicle. And what twenty does, it calls out exactly eight inches of height of grass or weeds that would grow immediately under or adjacent to a vehicle. Now, this is different than our normal grass height, which is twelve inches of height. And the idea here is that this is really just an indicator that a vehicle hasn't moved and is a nuisance because that grass is growing up underneath. So eight inches is the standard, under or immediately adjacent to a vehicle. And also then under D relates to a matter of illicit discharge, where what we've seen in a lot of cases that a concentration, gas, oil, flammable explosive, other type of automobile chemicals are leaking. And our evidence via leakage, discharge, or discolored soil. So we want to be able to call that out as an illicit discharge, put it under the nuisance regulation, and demand cleanup. Questions about nuisance vehicles?
Any questions?
Next one is one that Kevin and I particularly gonna work on closely, but this is about enforcement, so I'm gonna skip over the next session there because we're gonna do more on code enforcement for imminent threats to public health, safety, and welfare. Next one, ninety-six oh nine, relates to debris in the stormwater drainage system. So this is the idea that somebody would intentionally and unlawfully rake, sweep, blow, wash, direct, or place any debris, including yard waste, brass clippings, tree trimmings, logs, stumps, leaves, soil gravel, or rock into the stormwater drainage system. A lot of people intentionally fill up their ditches, and it's just wrong. Your ditch is your friend. You want to keep your ditch open. You want the water to be able to flow in your ditch so that the water moves. There are folks that simply just don't like water on their property, and they feel that if they somehow clog up the ditch, that's gonna prevent the water from causing them damage. It's not gonna be, cannot be. So the idea of anybody intentionally doing that is a clear violation. So that's restriction on debris. The next one relates similarly to brass clippings, but this one is a tough one. This one is kind of a sign of the times. We've all seen it. The landscaper standing on the side of the road, he's got his backpack blower on, and he's on the lawn, he's just blowing those brass clippings right into the street. And the cars drive by at thirty-five miles an hour, and they blow those brass clippings all down the road and just spread them out. And as far as the landscaper's concerned, well, his job's done, right? Those clippings are off their lawn, off the sidewalk, off of the area that they're responsible for maintaining, but what they've done is pushed them into our public drainage system. So that's a clear violation. Problem we've always had is proving it and being able to verify and get irrefutable evidence. But, you know, nowadays, with a video phone, you could do that. I can snap a picture of that landscaper, I can get a video of that activity going on. And what our ordinance does here is allow for that immediate fifty-dollar violation to be given to the landscaper doing the blowing, to the person that's immediately responsible for that violation. So there could be, there would be a citation or a fifty-dollar fine that could be issued immediately to the violator with no prior notice, as long as we did have good video and irrefutable evidence. Of course, any violation would be subject to appeal. That landscaper would have the right to come back before the Board of Adjustments and argue that somehow they weren't doing it. But the idea that we could immediately find a violator is what's key in that, in that regard. Moving on to Chapter One-eleven regarding peddling and solicitation. This one relates specifically to mobile food trucks and vendors, this is another sign of the times. Back in two thousand and fourteen is when we initiated this whole chapter regarding mobile food vendors. It was lots of research and lots of work done by that, by all planners in the department. So it just goes about specifically defining a mobile food truck. Nowadays, most of them are trailers. This one talks about a motorized vehicle trailer or push cart. We don't really get many push carts, a lot of the time they're trailers. So we wanted to be clear in the definition of what is a mobile food truck. It could include a trailer. The ones, things that we deleted about requiring privilege licenses, of course, we don't get to charge for privilege license anymore, so we needed to strike that out of Section D under permit application. And then the biggest one is under F-three regarding inspection of a mobile food cart. And that's because any North Carolina county will actually inspect the same criteria because the law is, of course, North Carolina state law. So the idea that a trailer that comes to Creedmore to operate may be inspected in any North Carolina county, because it meets the same criteria. So we've eliminated the requirement that it would have to be approved by a grand old county health inspector. Further on down, number eight relates specifically to advertising and the fact that every one of these folks has truckloadful signs that they come with, whether it be "Open Now", "Park Here", you know, "Do Whatever". And we want to allow that because every one of them has it, but we want to be sure to keep it close to the truck and not let those signs stretch either up the street or down the street as a way to attract attention via off-premise advertising. So the signs have to stay within ten feet of the truck and, of course, go when the And then the last one, again, privilege licenses is struck there, same reasoning under that. Any questions on Chapter One-eleven? Anything there you like, don't like?
No, sir.
Okay, we're doing great. One-fifty-six point two-four, this is under community appearance, Chapter One-fifty-six relating specifically to land maintenance and weeds. This is a problem that we run into with subdivisions that have mature trees that hang over the right-of-way. A lot of times we suffer from complaints where box trucks or larger moving trucks or anything that's moving along these streets hit these overgrown trees vegetative growth above the right-of-way. So what One-fifty-six point two-four B inserts is that trees, tree branches, vines, or any other vegetative growth that overhangs the right-of-way shall be trimmed to maintain a clearance height of fifteen feet above the right-of-way. So again, if it's a city street and it's a city tree, we do that. But a lot of times, these are private trees, again, that have grown large and mature and overhang onto the city's right-of-way. So in that case, we would ask the private property owner to maintain that fifteen-foot clearance to give that passage free on the right-of-way.
Should I include the file office too?
Yeah, yeah, we want to be sure to keep those side marks clear. One-fifty-six point four-six is specifically about parking on the grass and what is designated as your front yard. So lots of recreational vehicles in Creedmore, recreational vehicles, boats, sports craft, et cetera, should always be parked in et cetera, should always be parked in the side and rear yard. Should preferably be behind a fence, which don't have to be behind a fence, but certainly where they cannot be is in the designated front yard of a property. So the designated front yard does not include the driveway, but it certainly includes areas that are intended to be law.
Mr. Frankus?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Wilk?
Just a quick question. I want to make sure that doesn't include the street front of the house.
No.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's move on. So those are all the ones under the code of ordinances. Those are the amendments proposed for that document. The next batch?
Yes. Commissioner Albright?
Sorry. We have, when you come out of our driveway and up to the stop sign, there is a vacant lot that's grown up, and I'm sure somebody owns it. I don't know who the owners are. But the trees have come down to where, when you're coming up the street, like, you can't see the stop sign.
Oh, yes.
Like, I mean, it, we know it's there because we travel it often, but you know, but it does overhang, so who would you?
That should be the private property owner's responsibility. We would send it to the owner of that tree. Now, if the tree was in the public right-of-way, our Public Works Department would handle a work order to clear the branches to make the sign visible.
Yeah.
Whereas if the tree was, you know, off the right-of-way and the branches were reaching across, we're going to go to that private property.
Now, it's from, you know, it's probably, I'm not good with feet and all that stuff, but probably from here to the doors going out is where it's from. But when you, when you start to go up the street, the tree does hang, you know, out somewhat into the?
It's going to be the private property owner's responsibility there to maintain their tree. That's what our code enforcement officer would do. He'd let them know.
I think it is a lot, so I know somebody owns it. I'm not sure who that is, but, okay.
I'll look after that one. We'll get him, we'll get him on that one. This one here is about structures and, this was something in Mr. Jensen's case. She'll hear. Bye-bye. Mr. Jensen, so this relates to the Creedmore Development Ordinance. And this is the document that applies to the ETJ as well as the corporate limits of the city. So in Article 2, under general provisions, we are amending 2.10, outdoor storage. Neither, outdoor storage of motor vehicles, boats, recreational vehicles, sports craft, and other goods and materials, or refuse containers, shall be located in any established front yard setback or established side yard abutting the street, nor in any required buffer or screen, except for the temporary placement of refuse to schedule curb side collection. Now, this works best in a traditional subdivision, right? The idea is that your front yard is next to your neighbor's front yard is next to your neighbor's front yard. In Mr. Hanson's case, unfortunately, he's looking at the backyard of a property. So this ordinance might not directly help. That's the idea, that what we're trying to do is regulate outdoor storage, which is the problem there in the ETJ. Now, what we're trying to do, and I feel what our ordinance gives us the right to do, is to begin, protect that curb appeal, protect that front yard setback from the storage of these boats, motor vehicles, et cetera. The rear and side yards is another little bit of a challenge. It's difficult to be able to do that. We're going to have to investigate further about exactly what's being stored out there and how it's being stored.
Mr. Frankus? Mayor 14.
So this specific, what talks about refuse containers, it's in direct disagreement with our HOA rules. Our HOA rule said they need to be screened from the, from the road, but they can be in the front yard. So I would assume that city ordinance trumps HOAs?
Yeah. Well, that's true, but first, it doesn't sound to me, if you want to describe what they're necessarily in conflict, those things are not mutually exclusive. For instance, you could have your truck is located in your rear yard, or like, they're screened from the, from the front.
Right, but we're allowing people to put them in their driveways in front of their garage doors now.
Oh, actually.
And they're saying if a truck's in front of it, it's considered screened. But when the truck goes to work and they're out there all day long, that's what I'm saying.
Right, so, right, I guess my point is that I don't think that those provisions are necessarily at odds with one another. However, if that's the general practice in your neighborhood, I think that that would likely be a violation of the, if this amendment were.
Thank you.
Article 4, next one, relates to boards and commissions. This is an old fix that we've needed for a little while because of the membership of both our planning boards and Board of Adjustment, has varied so much over the years that we've amended the ordinance to simply identify an appropriate number of members who shall reside within the city limits and an appropriate number of members residing in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. And right now, you all know, we've had vacancies on both boards in corporate limits and ETJ. Moving on, related to Article 7, permits and procedures. This is about our certificate of zoning compliance. So this is at the end of a project when our code enforcement officer would be responsible for going out, making sure that everything is as it should be. And the point here is that we will not issue a certificate of zoning compliance unless all the required standards are met. So 2A meets the permitted design and structure placement, meaning you told us where you're going to put it, you better have put it there, and therefore, if it's not there, we're not going to approve your permit. Finished grading in the front, rear, and side yards is positive slope away from the structural foundation, free from holes, voids, ruts, hollows, or depressions that could retain or cause standing water. So the idea is when you finish a lot and the grading is done, it needs to be flat and smooth, positively sloped away from the structure. C relates specifically to our address placard and our unit identification, which is referenced to CDOT Code 2.23. D is the requirements of a mailbox. Still, single-family detached houses do get mailboxes individually, but a lot of times, they're in the cluster mailbox units for multifamily or other type developments in subdivisions nowadays. So mailbox's got to be part of it, at least some accommodation for mail delivery. E relates specifically to driveway approval. On city maintained streets, it would be the Public Works Department, and on NCDOT streets, we would require a copy of their driveway approval. Seed and straw, to protect all bare surfaces at the end, we do not require sod, we do not require actually that the grass grow, we just require that seed and straw be down and that bear spots are protected from erosion. Curb gutter, sidewalk, and driveway meets all requirements. That's related to expansion joints and no cracks, and the idea that they're formed correctly, and our Public Works Department does that inspection for us. Specifically related to commercial dumpsters, a lot of times at the end of construction, a home builder will leave a dumpster, and they don't want it on their driveway, they want it on the grass. Well, we don't want it on the grass, we want it on the driveway because we want the grass to grow. So this H is specific about commercial dumpsters or other collection bins located off the front yard or other grass surfaces and on the appropriate driveway. So when that dumpster is full, the carding company would come and pick it up, and it would simply be gone, there would be no remnant. If it were left on the grass, after the pickup, what we're left with is a 20 by 10 air spot that somebody would have to come back and seed and straw later. So that's become a conflict with us probably in the last couple of years, so we wanted to codify the idea, dumpster can't be on the lawn. And then I is the catch-all, that the site must meet all other pertinent ordinances, regulations, and requirements. Sometimes that relates to fences, sometimes that relates to other structures, temporary or otherwise, that might be on-site. So the CZC, which is the certificate of zoning compliance, is an important step, and we're trying to improve B, the review and findings about the specifics that have to be included for you to get a CZC. What happens if you fail a CZC? Commissioner Way, reinspection fee. And right now, this ordinance does call out the idea that a reinspection fee is $100. The ordinance doesn't say $100. We know that our fee and rate schedule is identified as $100, but you get one inspection for free, the one inspection that comes with the cost of the permit. If you fail that inspection, that's when the reinspection fee comes into play, and you won't get that unless you pay first, and you won't get your CZC unless you have that fee paid.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah. And like I told you all before, we've been abused on that a lot.
Yeah.
You know, we try hard to be super friendly and helpful, and we go out there numerous times to get folks right, and repeatedly, it's not solved. It's not solved. We want to argue about it. Well, when you throw down a $100 reinspection fee, there's less arguing, there's more doing.
Mr. Frankus?
Yes, sir.
Mayor 14.
Number B, when we're talking about the grading.
Yeah.
Is it possible to add to this? And I know that we've talked about this because I've got a property where grading on the house behind me is not proper, and their water flow runs right, it's flooded out my backyard ever since they moved in. I would like to see a addition to this that says the grading will slope away from the structure, not to run off into someone else's yard. So that if somebody wants to grade and it runs off and floods out someone else's yard, that's not acceptable. We had this in New York, didn't we, eh?
What's that?
We had this in New York. Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't flood somebody else's yard out from building something. So I'd like to see that in here somehow, some way, so that if a new structure is built and they slope it, there has got to be a ditch or something constructed there so that it doesn't damage another person's property.
So of course, water must flow downhill, and it's your responsibility as a property owner to accept the water that comes from you uphill and discharge it lawfully downhill. But your point about damage, I think, is relevant. What is damage, I guess I would ask? Is standing water damage, or is it that water floods the foundation?
I can't use my space. I can't use my space in my yard because it's, I can't even get the yard mowed because the water overflowed so badly off a dogwood drive that I can't get the back end of my yard mowed. And this is all since this house was built because the water, and there are logs in the ditch, and, but it's not a storm drain, I've been told, it's just some sort of personal ditch that's been dug there. But, yeah, and my yard never flooded. I've lived there for 22 years, and in the last three years, it flooded so bad that the mowers can't mow back there because they'll sink. It caused, it's almost vandalism.
Well, yeah, I mean, my thought is that, I think we, mine is, right, in North Carolina, law of policy is called doctrine of reasonable use. That means that a property owner is entitled to redirect water onto another property provided that their conduct is not unreasonable and provided it does not cause unreasonable and substantial damage to the downstream property. Now, I would, I think that it might be tricky, maybe not impossible, but tricky to craft an ordinance, a city ordinance provision that would address this situation. I think to my point exactly is that we would then have to define what is, you know, what sort of grading is in fact appropriate, what sort of damage does the city deem tolerable versus intolerable. And that, those sorts of questions start getting, I think, a little bit close to the line of what is appropriately in the city's business and the city's authority versus what is more appropriately a private property dispute. I think that there may be a way, well, I will speculate, I think we have to give it some serious thought to determine whether or not there is a way the city could appropriately take.
Come on over, I'll show you.
I don't, I don't, if you were, because those decisions exist on the property, probably do, I have very similar mind. The problem is that it's going to be tricky under the city's legal authority to regulate that sort of thing. I think that the law generally would dictate that that is more of a private property dispute. You would have to, you know, take legal action against that property, or you have to prove that their conduct is unreasonable and that their conduct is fraudulent and unreasonable and substantial injury to your property. I'm litigating these sorts of.
I understand that, but it just makes sense to me that when somebody's building a new home and we have to slope the water away from the home, we could absolutely require them to put a ditch or a drain or a French drain or something so that it doesn't impact or impede or destroy another person's property.
Well, I think, again, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Right.
That there is a legitimate reason why they might want to do something like that. I think what I'm suggesting is that the manner in, this is not something the city could just snap up right in the way that you just described it.
Why not?
Prior to DCP, you have to install a drain to prevent impacts.
Yes.
We now need to figure out, like I said, what are tolerable impacts, what are intolerable impacts? How would the city go about regulating this? What sorts of drains, ditches, swales would be required, under what sorts of circumstances? How big do they need to be? What do you need the applicant to provide at the time of a site plan or construction drawing to estimate stormwater runoff so that we know, you know, what the appropriate stormwater conveyance mechanism would be to protect the downstream property? There's, it's a, it's a very simple issue that you're thinking, but the type of regulation that you're suggesting, I think, would be fairly complex and would require a lot of thought, and ultimately, it might be more cumbersome and put the city in a difficult spot in terms of trying to implement and enforce cumbersome and untenable regulations than, than is worth for the city. So I think, all I'm saying to you is that I think it's, you know, I think it's reasonable to direct staff to look into how the city might go about implementing some sort of regulation like that, but I think it comes with a lot of legal difficulties, in addition to some practical difficulties or questions about how we would define these things, what specifically we would require.
Okay.
Standing water is very common in Creedmore. I think everyone who was here growing up knows that water stands on top of the soil. Now, I certainly don't want, I don't know that standing water equals substantial damage. Certainly if it flooded a foundation, certainly if it flooded a shed, if there was some other true erosion or landslide kind of risk, but simple flooding, this is Creedmore.
And I think it's also important to count that the, and this is kind of what I'm getting at, regular fore-impact doesn't ever talk about here, issues of the zoning compliance department would happen likely before any of the impacts that you were mentioning to your property would have really occurred, right? You know, the zoning compliance department happens pretty much once the, there was zone construction was done and the city could set up, you know, all the, all the regulations. What's happened, it sounds like in your situation, is after that point, you discovered that the manner in which that structure was constructed or the grading was dealt with the site had impacted your property. At that point, it's too late to regulate that as part of the zoning compliance permit approval process. But what we would need to do is probably backtrack into kind of development regulation portion and require that it's part of like the site design process. A developer would need to, you know, to project based on the grading that they're proposing the site, where stormwater runoff would be directed. You know, two, about, you know, what the anticipated stormwater runoff flow would be, and then they would, the city would need to require some method of addressing or mitigating those impacts, if we're in installation of like a stormwater drain, a French drain, a ditch, or a swale.
It might be better suited to Article 19, which is on watershed protection, more about the flood control, rather than this section of zoning permits and procedures. the flood control, rather than this section of zoning permits and procedures. It's something we could certainly look into, Commissioner. I promise you we will.
Mr. Wilkins.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think standing water is unreasonable damage, as you just mentioned. Please look into it. Attorney, you said it's tricky. Let's get tricky. Let's find out what we can do to mitigate it in the future.
Seven point one four, water and wastewater allocations. This is another old concept. When this ordinance was originally adopted back in 2012, it was pre-merger or just about when mergers were being discussed. And there was this concept of 100,000 gallons of capacity that was infinite, right? And could infinitely be renewed. And we know that that's not the case. So we're striking that first sentence there, but we're adding the sentence at the bottom, which I think is crucial, and the idea that water and wastewater allocation shall not be granted to projects outside the municipal corporate limits. Now, this exists right now in our temporary policy, the policy that we have already in place for water and wastewater allocation. But this codifies it in bringing it in to the Creedmore Development Ordinance. Then we'll move on to Article 19, which these, again, are some of these outdated processes that had been originally adopted in 2012. And this relates specifically to ownership and maintenance of an S C M. An S C M is a stormwater control measure. And there used to be a method by which we would hold a warranty bond on all stormwater control measures. Again, the General Assembly has taken away that right from cities to require maintenance and warranty bonds. So the idea is that we are striking all of those sections. It's duplicated at least three times in the future pages there, which talks about the need for reserve funds, escrow accounts, and other means of financial surrogacy. What will happen now in the future is it's going to be addressed just like any other notice of violation. And if there is a problem with your S C M, you will receive a N O V letter from the code enforcement officer. You'll be responsible for making the repairs on your own. If you don't make the repairs on your own, we will follow through in our traditional enforcement methods in order to make that S C M compliant. So that takes us through nineteen point two three, nineteen point two four, and then the last little bits there, just changing up the numbers because we deleted so many sections just to get the numbers correct. And that wraps up Z P A oh one. Now, also included in your agenda package is an ordinance which would review, under your review, for approval, as well as a resolution regarding the consistency of these ordinance amendments with the 2024 planning. So there are actually two items that need to be voted on, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and we need to do a public hearing.
Yes, sir. That, too.
All right. Before I go to the board of questions, let's do the public hearing and tell you something that you haven't thought of. So we will open the meeting for public hearing. May I believe you're... Come up here, give your name and your address for me, please, and you'll have three minutes.
I'm Manuela Gilara Rosi, G I, A B, 2511 N C I with 56, in Morrolen, Carolina, 2522. I started. And the boys, the people, they're asking me for the signs, the billboard from the inner city limits, or the banners more clear. When we put the flags, City Creedmore. And that people are asking me, we not part of the city? We not pay taxes? They don't put the City Creedmore banner on our areas? That's one thing. I'll continue. I still congratulate the police officers. They do a great job. They have slowed down people from speeding. And a lot of people are asking me also, why they don't put the sign from the city to 20 miles below us, on school areas, there. That's the second part.
Before we go any further, this is a public hearing regarding the ordinance changes. Do you have anything that pertains to that?
On that changes, I agree with all of you.
Okay, because that's really all you can speak about is in regards to the ordinances.
Okay. That's all I can say. That today's meeting is a really great meeting. And I agree with the taxes.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right. Any other public comment? Not hearing any. I'll close the public hearing, and I will start with Commissioner Gleason. No questions? Commissioner Way?
No, sir. I haven't, Matt.
Mayor Proten?
No.
Commissioner Albright?
No, sir.
Commissioner Wilkins?
Nothing, sir.
All right. So we got all that down. I believe now you need a motion to adopt... Just make a motion to adopt Z P A 2024 dash zero one. We can do both of those at the same.
Correct. I think as long as that hasn't happened, you vote your ordinance.
Yeah, so Commissioner Gleason is making a motion to adopt Resolution Consistency 2024 dash R dash O eight and Ordinance 2024 dash O dash six, amending the Creedmore Code of Ordinances and Creedmore Development Ordinance as proposed in Z P A 2024 dash one. Am I correct? All right. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Motion is made by Commissioner Gleason. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero. All right. Let's see. That took care of that. Mr. Wilkins?
Mr. Mayor, may I request a five-minute bio break?
You sure can. We will take a five-minute recess. Since we voted on that budget, I've been like, it looks like three of us want to pass a decision. And I'm going to make sure that I tell Amanda Noahs. I'm going to ask her. Because they say there is a tax increase.
What did you do for?
My dog.
I'm sorry.
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 I'm trying to find my phone.
I'm trying to find my phone.
I'm trying to find my phone.
We will move to eleven A, discussion of farmer's market.
Mayor Proten.
It is me. I still would like to see this farmer's market come to fruition at the city. I understand that Ms. Brogdon, who agreed to meet with the chief and the city manager and discuss how we could proceed, in the morning of the meeting, she decided that she was gonna cancel the meeting and was not long, no longer interested. So I would like to see us give this a try and see how it does. I've spoken to four or five different vendors who usually sell stuff in the Southern States parking lot when they have their pluck and shuck, or I think that's what it's called, I'm not exactly sure. Um, but if, but that's it. But if, if everybody on this board wants to just drop it, then I'm okay with that. I, I just would like to see us give it a try, but if my fellow commissioners would rather just not do it this year, we'll, we'll put it on the, we'll wait until next fall or winter and, and discuss it again, and maybe we can see what we can do.
Commissioner Albright.
Um, I think we should go ahead and at least give it a try, maybe like once or twice and see who shows up. But I would also like, if anybody knows, how come the Lyons Farms lady out here doesn't come anymore? 'Cause Lyons Farms is down Creed.
Down Creedmore.
Mm-hmm, down Creedmore Road, and they go to Franklinton, they go to Wake Forest, and a couple other places, but why doesn't she come here anymore?
Lyons Farms has been owned by the Lyons anymore, so I don't know if that has anything to, it has anything to do with it or not. Um, I will make notes and stop by and talk to them and see what's going on.
Yeah.
As far as.
'Cause I know she used to bring her strawberries and corn on the slab and all that stuff, and that was great to come here for a weekend, you know?
Yeah, and this was, well, she did it right out in front of her, her place business, but it would be nice if she could be part of this. And my feeling on this is we tried to work with Ms. Brogdon, and I'm not saying this because she would work with us, she just basically said she was going to stay, and the people that, her customers wanted her to stay where she was, people that were there with her wanted to say where they were. To me, that's their choice. We gave them an opportunity to come up here, apparently we're not gonna compete with them because their people won't say where they are. I, I'd like to see us give it a try, too. Mr. Gleason. Right. Mr. Way.
All right, I'm gonna see if we can go forth with it. The only question I have is, is there anything since she calls herself the Creedmore Farmer's Market, is she allowed to do that without permission?
I don't think she has a, uh.
She's got a banner out there.
Right. Banner that says Creedmore Farmer's Market, she's off that thing for days.
Which is fine, but I, I don't think there's any rule or regulation we can say Creedmore's Farmer's Market.
Right. I mean, there's a, a lot of trade.
Yeah, that's what's going on.
Well, how about community farmer's market? We could do that.
We could still do Creedmore, it's not gonna get us any trouble.
Creedmore Community.
But you could do the Creedmore Community Farmer's Market if you just wanna change it up a little bit.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
All right, Mike, do you need anything other than that, just as general consensus, to go ahead with it?
Uh, no, sir, I don't.
Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Kaczynski?
No, sir, I, I don't think so.
All right, we move to twelve, which is.
And I don't have anything either, Mr. Mayor.
Well, knowing you like that dude, you wouldn't spoke of.
He was playing on his phone.
City management board.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, a couple of things I bring your attention tonight. The Creedmore Veterans Monument has been completed, it's in South Boston, waiting to be shipped to us. It is going to be installed Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty four. A dedication ceremony and ribbon cutting is being planned for Friday, June the twenty first, at the community center from six to seven P M. The foundation was poured today by Public Works, so that's, that's been completed. Angie and a whole crew of folks, including the veterans organization, um, everybody that's a stakeholder in this is part of the planning and execution of it. Anyway, Spectrum Fiber Optics has begun the installation process and have advised that they will be complete by June the fourteenth. Two octagon picnic tables have been installed for public use at the corner of Main and Sanford, behind the ATM. They look great down there. Uh, V C three executive summer for the month of May, fifteen work orders were opened and thirty-five were closed, and that number varies, but the monthly bill is still the same amount as the board approved by contract. On June the twelfth, twenty twenty four, Creedmore will host the June twelfth City County Managers' Meeting. We have, we have a rotation of City County Managers that go all around the county, and we take turn hosting that, and Creedmore will be the host of that.
Where will that be?
Uh, it'll be in the Willoughby Room.
Just wondering.
Yes, sir. Um, the Granville County Board of Elections invoiced the city for the twenty twenty-three municipal election totaling sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents, which is an increase of almost five thousand dollars over the twenty twenty election. Um, don't know what the, what caused that difference, but anyway. So we, that invoice has been passed, received and paid. Johnson Control are expected to complete the upgrade to the Creedmore Police Department Electronic Access Door Control System, uh, this, uh, this Friday. The locksmith's been here yesterday and today working, so they're trying to finish setup. Send me to your questions, that's all I have.
Mr. Wilkins, any questions, sir?
None, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Albright.
Um, uh, Mike, on number two, Spectrum Fiber Optics.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that for all of Creedmore, or is that just from Main Street, or where is, where's the location?
Fiber Optics is coming in off Elm Street of Sanford and into our server room here. It's gonna come in the main electrical panel closet first, and then it's gonna come over to our server room where they are, but it's covering City Hall and City of.
Mayor Proten.
Uh, not the agreement we have, no, ma'am, it's just for City Hall and all the agents there, yeah.
Mr. Gleason.
No question.
Mr. Way.
Nothing, sir.
All right, we move down now to Sigwassa Report. Mayor Proten.
Okay, I'm pulling my notes here. Um, Sigwassa had a sewer overflow event on Elm Street, which caused a resident to have a backup at their home, um, on Church Street. And the mayor was kind enough to reach out to me and ask me to check, and I did, and the last word I have on that is Sigwassa has taken ownership of the problem, and they're working with the owner and their, and the Sigwassa Insurance Company. Mayor Linda Jordan has resigned from the Sigwassa Board as of yesterday, and Councilperson Judy Chief will be our new board member representing Butner. That's all I got.
Mr. Way, anything to add?
Uh, no, sir, nothing I have to add, is the latest director's report was emailed out this afternoon upon receipt.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner's Report, let's start with Mr. Wilkins.
Well, Tuesday, May twenty first, I attended a Butner STEM Award Ceremony for honor students, and last night I attended the Granville County School Board Meeting of Knoxville. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Way.
Uh, I attended the South Granville FFA banquet for my son, the senior there, um, he was Senior of the Year for FFA. Um, at the same time that night, they had a lot going on, it was also the choral concert that was afterwards, so a lot going on with our future in Creedmore, getting ready to graduate and move on, getting ready to take all of our places, doing other things in the world.
God save us all. All right, Commissioner Albright.
Um, uh, our CPRC meeting was canceled for this past month, um, but I did attend the Falls Lake Academy graduation on Saturday with, um, County Commissioners Russ May and Tim Karen and Mayor Proten, uh, Georgia Anna Kaczynski, and then our Representative Frank Softman and myself, and, uh, we had a very good time, it was very nice.
Thanks, ma'am. Mr. Gleason.
I attended the, uh, South Granville Concert, I attended Sigwassa meeting, I attended two county meetings, um, I will be out of town, I'm leaving on Friday, we'll be back the following
Mayor Proten.
Okay, I attended the Falls Lake graduation, which is always a beautiful ceremony. They did a heartfelt tribute to a former teacher, uh, who was also a pickleball player at our community center. Um, South Granville High School Spring Concert, we attended, it was very exciting, and the costuming was beautiful. Uh, we have very talented students in our school. I attended the South Granville High School Baccalaureate, which was very tastefully done. Uh, attended a UNRBA meeting where discussion of being a recognized entity by the legislature, uh, is to be included in the watershed talks, and that's being led from, by, um, Granville County to try and get us, get the legislature to recognize us. I attended a Campo joint meeting with the Durham and Chapel Hill representatives to the review, the upcoming projects and projections, and if you haven't been on Main Street lately, you are missing it. I wanna thank the property owners who have responded to our requests to freshen up their buildings, uh, their awnings, and the ones that have been done so far look amazing, and I can't wait for the remainder to get theirs done. Remember when we have set aside money to fund a facade grant to help financially with their projects if they would like us to? Um, they can apply at the Community Development Office for that facade grant, the paperwork is, that's where they find it. I would also like to invite all veterans to come and join us for the unveiling of the Creedmore Veterans Monument. Uh, this has been a project for just a little over a year. I'm gonna tell you something, this one moved fast, and I'm very proud to, to see that it has moved fast. It'll be on June twenty first, as the city manager said, at six P M, and we hope you will all attend.
Thanks, ma'am. Mayor Proten, I attended the South Granville High School Choral Concert. Next year, if you get a chance, please, I encourage all citizens to attend, those kids really work hard, Jenny Hopgood does an excellent job. Um, they're also collecting funds to help fund next year's Choral Concert Tour, so please give generously. Attended the Baccalaureate for, um, South Granville High School, and last week, um, I was on vacation, but I still worked a little bit. I went to Morehead City and toured their city hall, I met with their city manager, Chris Turner, nice fellow, but he's about a footballer, Mike, so it's just, really nice, but you ought to see this facility, 'cause it was an old school, they have a first floor, you go to second floor administrative offices, the mayor's office is probably about two-thirds the size of this room, and I mean, they had a room they could go to for closed sessions and block everybody outside with, but I really liked the mayor's office, so I, I will stick that next year's budget. All right, that's all I've got, and Mayor Proten.
I wanna thank, um, before, I, I turned the page and forgot about it. I wanna thank the Recreation Director, the garden, that I helped plant that had been neglected for a little bit of time, has now been renovated and updated and cleaned up, and it looks great, and I wanted to thank Dennis for his hard work on doing that. Thank you.
All right, one other thing, again, I wanna thank the city staff, uh, city manager Turner, and all the department heads and employees and officers of Creedmore, they worked so hard on this budget. Uh, it went a lot smoother, we didn't sit here for five weeks working on it as we have times in the past, so again, we're job well done.
Thank you.
And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So, motion, say it, Mr. Wilkins, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. We are adjourned. Dennis.
Dennis.
Come say aye.
You been here all week? Okay, I'll send one, I'll write you an email, and, uh, next Friday, I'll show you. I didn't know. But even birthday, so.
You what?
I saw you.
Oh, I saw you. I kept expecting you, but all of a sudden, Mike started, oh, I just, we are fortunate.
No, um, well, I, there, there's a show here that I can keep you on.
I'm glad you did.
Oh, it's great. Right.
I'm on, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on. I like, I like, I mean, I'm like, I'm like. When I saw you, I said, what? We voted no. He said, no, we voted no. Yeah, Moss already said. That's why he's running.